Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started. This is the workshop, November 12th, City of LaMarque, beginning at 3:30 PM. Let the record reflect, all members of council are present with the exception of Mayor Pro Tem Bell. He may be here later this evening. We also want to wish him a happy birthday today. I think his family has him pulled away. Without objection, that'll be an excused absence. Item number three, new business, A, discussion, possible action regarding preparation of the city manager position profile and review of the job duties and responsibilities. We have with us Mr. Ron Cox, Ron Cox Consulting. Take it away, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see all the council members and staff again, and great to meet you, Mr. Lane.
Yes, sir.
We talked on the phone, he was kind of busy a couple of weeks ago. So I guess you're probably on vacation now.
I would like to think so.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. And this is not working, and oh, it goes down instead of up. Okay. To be with you, so look forward to visiting with you a little bit more. I've talked with each of you individually, and I've also met with the staff. So I've got from an individual perspective kind of what your thoughts are, but corporately, I wanted to do this in a meeting so that we could build what we, build the job profile together as we go through this. And so I want to do a couple of things. I want to make sure that our timeline and process is okay with everybody as we move through this, so I have one to propose. I want to talk a little bit about governance. I've looked at your charter, and I've looked at the job description, I've talked to you all, but I've looked at both of those, and I want to make sure that I understand them correctly from y'all's perspective, and you guys are all, you folks are all on the same page, we're all on the same page with regard to governance. Mayor and council responsibilities, city manager responsibilities, job duties and responsibilities. And then I want to go, and in that discussion, we're also going to talk about, I've taken a look at your contract, and I want to be able to talk about the, in general at least, the compensation package, to see if there's any changes you want in that as we work through this, so that I can be prepared to talk about that and the job profile as well. And then finally, I want to talk about council expectations. I've asked the staff when I met with them a couple of weeks ago what their expectations were, and I'll show those to you, but not until after we've talked, not until after I've talked to you about your expectations. And that's what I talked to you individually about, but I want to get that corporately. And then once we get through with that, then our next meeting would be, is scheduled right now for December the 10th, that's a regular meeting date. And Mayor, if we can come in early like this again, that would be great, and have a little work session. By that time, we should be ready for some action. Today, we're not. This is information gathering, but by then, we'll be ready for you all to approve that job profile. I don't anticipate there are any changes in the job description, the HR directors take a look at them, but I want to make sure you all are satisfied with it as well. And if there's something that changes there, then we'd have that opportunity, and with that, we would move out into the market at that point after the December 10th meeting. And that sort of goes to the agenda, or to the timeline of the process. So you all engaged me on the 8th of October, and we were able to get together then with our council and staff interviews on the 30th of October. Now we're here with the meeting on the 12th. Our next meeting, we've already indicated, would be the 10th. After the, after, in January, the meetings later on this slide are tentative dates. Just kind of give you a round number, and those are probably going to change, and I don't know if I've exactly lined them up to your council meeting dates or not, but what I would like to do is come back in January with a briefing. Those meetings from, from, from after the 12th, or after the 10th of December forward would likely be, assuming your city attorney agrees, would likely be an executive session, because at that point, we'll start talking about individuals.
Sure.
Whereas at this point, we're still talking in the global decision process.
We've done it that way in the past.
Okay, okay. So I've come back for a briefing just to kind of give you a status report of where we are and what we've been doing. We'll begin immediately upon receiving applicants to start looking at them. Those applicants will sort of categorize into qualified and not qualified based on your own individual, your own decisions at this meeting, what those qualifications would be. And then at some point, then, I'll start sort of internally in my own process, through my own process, or ranking those qualified ones to take a look at which ones I think would fit the profile better. And so that, on that analysis and screening of applications just starts almost immediately as they're received, but it'll be ongoing and completed by February the 11th. And so at that point in time, what I would suggest is a 30-day advertising period, so that's what that anticipates. It's a little bit over 30 days from the advertising, but it gives us an opportunity to get down to the semifinalists. The semifinalists can be any number that the council agrees on, but I'd say a minimum of five semifinalists. And those semifinalists, we would conduct oral interviews and written questionnaire, and we would begin to collate all of that information, provide that to the semifinalist committee, which is the mayor and the mayor pro tem. Let them interview those five if they wish to, up to those five, and then bring you, as the full council, the finalists out of that group, assuming that one or more out of that group are acceptable to the committee.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Typically, how many finalists are there? Two, three, or?
Yeah, two to three is usually what we do. I've seen it, we've done it, as many as five at one time. It becomes quite a burden to try to keep them all straight, but the two to three, I prefer at least three. That gives you a good flavor of different temperaments, personality types.
Sure.
By that time, they're all going to be qualified, and I would hope that they're all acceptable from a qualifications perspective. It's then how well do they fit you as a group, and how well do you think they'll fit the community as you review their applicants and things. But I think three is a, is a, is a good number, and if, but if there are more, if you say, I want the council to see all five, and talk to all five of these, then that's what we're going to do.
You guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think so. And I mean, just out of curiosity, I'm so curious about the process. Is it, is it allowed for one of us to come to one of the meetings with you and Mayor Pro Tem, and like sit in on some of those interviews, or?
I'm not sure how that's done.
If you do, that's a quorum.
Right.
So you'd have to post, and we would do that in executive session, but I think that would be up to you all internally. So, so from a casual perspective, it probably would not be appropriate simply because we wouldn't know you were coming.
Right, right.
And couldn't post notes. So I think maybe that's a decision point for the council to decide how you want to accomplish that, and whether you want more than two in that semifinalist committee process. So however you want to do it. Typically, try to keep that number as low, as small as possible, though, to do that initial screening.
That makes sense, yeah.
We had three our last hiring, and we did all three full council and executive.
Okay.
So that seemed to work well, except for the guy that was drunk and the other guy that said he was just passing through.
Nice. Those did work best.
Yeah, we didn't have a consultant, obviously. Nobody was there.
I guess we can't keep any of them from having a meeting drunk, if that's right, but we can sure tell by.
I do think it makes the choice easier, you know? If that's what they decide.
Yeah, we had no problem. That was a quick interview.
So I think between now and maybe our December 10th meeting, let's decide as a final decision whether, how to do the semifinalist negotiate, or interviews. Let's make that decision finally, and that way, we'll know what process we're going to use. I'd hate for us to change it midway through.
Sure.
But typically, the smaller the group, the better that does that initial semifinalist interview, and then everybody participates in the finalist interview, all five of them. We're looking at probably interviews in late February, early March, for full finalists, full council interviews of the finalists. We can, we may can step that forward just a little bit, so what I wanted to give you was kind of the ending window as opposed to the beginning of the window, but we may can move that forward. Once you make your selection, and you enter into those discussions and negotiations and make your selection, come to the final deal, it's usually at least a month and sometimes two before the selected city manager, if they're not local, makes their way into the position. So they've got to make a tran, hopefully, they've got to make a transition of some kind. If they, if they live in the area, that makes it easier. If they have to move, that complicates it. It's not going to be your applicant.
So, Ron, do you think we can have them in, in their chair by May?
I think so.
The reason I am curious about that is we don't want them to come in in June or July and jump right in the middle of the budget.
Right, right. And that, this sort of, this sets up that where they, that person will be in place before the, I've come in in November, and I've come in in August. August was the toughest. November gave me a whole year to get ready, you know, for the next budget. But, so coming in, you're exactly right, Mayor, coming in no later than, sometime, no later than May is helpful in that regard, get them oriented, and they can get started with the budget process. And again, if we can, we'll move that forward, that whole series of decision points forward or earlier in the process if we can. We have everything in place.
Sure.
Anything else on the, on the timetable? So I'll try to, try my best to stick with that timetable. So far, I've been able to do that in these selection processes. All right, so if you'll just bear with me a little bit, let me talk a little bit about the duties, responsibilities of the mayor and council from a very macro view, and what I've done is I've just kind of pulled sections out of the charter just to make sure that what I'm, what I'm, I'm going to put into the job profile is going to be accurate and according to your understanding. And then the same would be with the job duties, responsibilities, qualifications, compensations. So I was able to find a, or see your mission statement, and I think Robin sent it to me, but "On behalf of the citizens of LaMarque, the city council shall ensure the safety, health, and well-being of our community within the bounds of fiscal responsibility while preserving and advancing the quality of life of citizens." So that's, that's the how-to, and really, that's the, that's the key for the city manager. The, the vision of the community, or what we might look like when we grow up, is a vision that you would establish, and that the city manager would look forward to and aim everything toward, but the mission is how does he or she go about doing that. So I'm glad that you have that, they can see that, and they can say, okay, here's, here's sort of the outside parameters, or the corral, if you will, that I, that I work with then. City charter says that you're known as the council manager, former government, and subject only to the limitations imposed by the state statutes in this charter. And we all know that the state statutes are becoming more and more inhibited, inhibiting to cities across the state right now, but, so those things are changing just a little bit, but it does give cities, obviously, the ability to do a lot more than a general law city can do. And you're, all of those powers are vested in the city council, the elected council. And, and I believe just a little bit later, it talks, I talk about the mayor and the city council, and my understanding, Mayor, is that you vote, you're a voting member of the council, so you're considered a member of the city council.
Correct.
There've been some arguments over that over the years, based on how the charter was writ, written, and they got down to the brass tacks, and the mayor got cut out of the process, whether, whereby tradition, simply by the definition that's involved. And so what you've done is you've said the elected council, here and after referred to as the council, and then it defines that here just a little bit. And that, you're, the council enacts the local legislation, adopts the budget, determines policy, and appoints the city manager, who shall in turn execute laws and administer the government of the city. Council shall have, here we are, five members of the council, so that defines that for you all in my, in my opinion, and I'm sure city attorneys have made that rule before, which consists of the mayor and four council members. Mayor's elected in large, the four council members are elected by position, everyone elected to three-year terms, and as I recall, there are no term limits. I didn't see that.
That's correct.
Okay. There are no term limits. Robin, I was going to try to get an electronic version of the district map.
Oh, okay.
So, so I can put that maybe in the packet. Or if we can't put it in the job profile, we can have it at least in that page that we're making available for any applicant to take a look at.
Okay.
That'll be two things. One, it'll just kind of define for the applicant where everybody is in the, in that, in that system, but it'll also just outline what this community looks like in general.
Sure.
I think that'll be helpful. Three members constitute a quorum. You'll determine your own order of business, and maintain a record, three affirmative votes, passes, and action. Is there more than one reading of an ordinance, or?
Yes.
So there are two readings of an ordinance? I couldn't remember that.
Second reading being a public hearing, too. On the second reading, it's a public hearing.
Oh, wow, okay, okay. I didn't see that in the charter, but I would look in for it specifically.
It's, it's not really under the section of mayor and council, it's under the ordinance.
Ordinance, okay, that's why I didn't see it.
You'd make a great doctor.
I know it. So, so I told the staff, we just did that. If I can, if I can take these to my office and transcribe them in the next day or two, I should be able to read them. So that's the key, is for me to get these notes done pretty quickly. But you're, you're exactly right. This left hand has never functioned very well, at least to school penmanship standards.
You're doing just fine.
Adopt its own rules and order of business. Do you have, and I tended to ask you this, Robin, do you have council adopted rules of procedure internal?
I don't, no.
Okay. I didn't think you did, I didn't see them, but I wanted to make sure if you had them, we were going to include them in that packet of things.
We flow.
We just go with, there you go, that's probably it. Council, council shall appoint the city clerk on the recommendation of the, of the city manager. I believe that's the only position that by charter is appointed, other than the city attorney, that is appointed by the city council. City council, city attorney, city clerk, auditor, and that sort of thing.
That's correct.
And it just quickly outlines some duties of the clerk in that regard. Power of the, the role and power of the city council to appoint and remove the city manager, establish departments, approve budgets, authorize the issuance of bonds, authorize the inquiry into the conduct of an officer or department or agency, appoint members to boards of commissions, adopt modified carryout plans for the boards of commissions, adopt plans, and regulate the size, location, use of buildings, open area. I think that's just another way of saying zoning, get institutes over, which you, and provide for independent audit. Just a little bit, we'll take a look at the organizational chart, as it outlined, as it's outlined in this today. Your role is also to, by a majority vote, appoint the city manager, and the duties of that city management, city manager outlined here just a little bit prohibits any one of you from becoming city manager within two years after you, your term has expired. So there's a long, I'm not going to go through this, but there's a long process for the removal of the city manager if, if you do it without that person's compliance and, and working, just working through the process. That's probably the most detailed process that I've ever, that I've ever seen, quite frankly. So something happened along the line, probably, that caused that. Councils shall not direct or request the appointment of any person to, to a department, and except for the purpose of inquiry, the council members shall deal strictly through the, the city manager. That purpose of inquiry is pretty common in, in charters. It allows you to go to a department director and say, what about so-and-so, but not, I need you to go over here and do this, which is, which moves into that direction. So that's a common, that's a common theme for charters, and it's something that the council, that the city management, city manager applicant would likely look for, to make sure, you know, what is that role, what is my responsibility, who do I report to, how's that work, who reports to me, and those kind of things. And if you're violating any section of this charter, you shall summarily be executed. Well, no, that's not exactly what I'm saying. Guilty of a misdemeanor if you're found guilty in any way, so.
Could you read that paragraph, please?
The last one?
Mm-hmm.
Any councilman violating the provisions of this section or voting for a resolution or it's in violation of this statute shall be guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon conviction thereof, shall cease to be a council member. I've never seen that, actually.
Says that council will be the judge of each other. We can't file a misdemeanor or judge that, so that really needs to be removed from our charter. That's utterly ridiculous.
It's a hard thing to, that's a statement, actually, it's a statement that probably can't be enforced, but if you put it on the ballot, probably everybody will vote for it. It's one of those things, you've got to be paid up. A lot of times, there was a charter provision that said all council members, in order to run for office, had to be paid up on their taxes. Well, that's been found to be non-enforceable, but every time you put it on the charter amendment to get it removed, people vote against removing it, and that you're leaving on it, which you can't enforce it, so there are always some like that.
Sure, I guess, I guess my point is, we can be the judge of, of each other, but to be guilty of a misdemeanor, you actually have to go through the system. We're going to have to go through the JP court, the district court, or whatever. We can't levy a misdemeanor charge on each other. That's, and I, I've had discussions with different attorneys about that from other cities and, and different folks, and they said, yeah, that's, that's a court thing, it's not a council thing.
It's a court requirement, right. And it would be hard, hard, very hard, difficult to enforce, under any circumstances.
I can see why it stays on, though, because it's just like stating accountability.
Yeah.
But, right, it doesn't really, we can't say, we can't judge each other for.
Yeah, so you really, that's not how you keep each other accountable, is it? You keep each other accountable by your conversations together and working through any difficulties or issues that you have. Council by ordinance may create, change, or abolish offices, departments, or agencies other than offices. So this is, and this is also fairly common among charters, that is, the city manager is not authorized to create a department. They may, they may can combine some departments, they may can, they would appoint the department directors, but wholly and separately creating departments is clearly the responsibility of the council, and it's typical that it would be. May assign, the council may assign additional functions, duties, establishing a charter, may not discontinue a, an officer department without council approval. It has to take council approval.
So no city managers can come in and change public works to public services?
You know, there's some, there might be some debate about whether they can change the name of the department, but the function of the department is clearly the same. If, for me personally, I would, I would run that through a process of some kind, if I wanted to change that name, and I have, I actually have done that, kind of changed the name, which implied a different function or expanded the function perhaps, just to make certain that it would be clear. But you can't, you can't just say, okay, I'm going to do away, the city manager can't just do away with the public works department and say, we're not going to do that. It's going to be, or if you want to add departments, reorganize or whatever, I think what is inherent is, and in fact, we may talk about that in expectations, is what is your expectations with regard to reorganization of the organization? What are your expectations? Other duties, create boards and commissions and adopt ordinance. Two readings and a second, second if amended, but that includes also a public hearing in that section. City manager qualifications, chosen by the council based solely on municipal management, training, and executive and administrative responsibilities, and must be at some point in time a resident of the city of LaMarque. Have you given a time period for that residency to occur as you, as, as the manager has transitioned and come, come into the organization?
We have not given it any thought as a council, but I'm, I'm thinking that's going to be part of the interview process. I mean, if they say, I can't come for a year, see you.
Sure.
But if they say, you know, I can be here within 60 to 90 days, then that's.
Okay.
Even if, even if they drive to work, I'm talking about to actually get a house and either lease or, you know, you can't buy a house and close on it, just look at it split, you gotta, takes time.
So 60 to 90 days, from your perspective, would be the target?
If everybody's agreeable with that, I.
Certainly, it's negotiable.
To actually have an address here, yes.
Yeah.
Now, to come to work, that, they can travel here until they get a place.
Sure. And there are, you know.
I feel like, it seems like something that's just reasonably negotiable with each person, right?
And, and I was going to say, that depending on how badly you want that person, if they're saying, you know, I've got this house, I live on the north side of League City, and it may take me a while to, to get that, get my residency changed, then you know they can make it to work, you know they can do all the functions, it may be a little more negotiable, but there's not a timeframe here, so we need to think about what may be a reasonable timeframe. If the manager, if an applicant asks me, I'm going to say the target is to be here within 60 to 90 days, and then, but that it would be negotiable if, if they select, is that fair?
That's fair.
That sounds good.
If they're in the closing process of buying a home, and it goes over 90 days.
Or if they had some kind of extenuating circumstance, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you ever see relocation costs?
Yes.
Added to this?
And, and in fact, that's on the list when we get to that compensation package, and it also was included in the existing contract with Carol, she came. You shall set, set the salary, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit as well. The charter goes on to talk about the duties of the city manager. Head and, head of the administrative branch of the city, responsible to the city council for proper administration. Power required to appoint, when necessary, remove all employees. Power required to appoint, when necessary, remove all employees, except as provided in the charter, which is the city clerk and city attorney, although the city attorney is not considered employed here. Prepare budget annually and submit to the council. Prepare, report at the end of the fiscal year on the finances and administrative activities of the preceding year. Keep the council advised of the financial condition and perform other duties that may be prescribed by this council or, or others. That's the one that usually puts so much luggage on their back they can't walk anymore.
Can you relate to that shortly?
In the, in the absence of the city manager, then he or she shall appoint a person to take their place. Subject to the approval of the city council. And if they don't, the charter points out that if the city manager doesn't make that appointment, then the council has the authority to do that. May recommend the creation of administrative departments. So it's clear, council has the authority to create it. And, and the manager has, has the authority to recommend those, any organizational changes that he or she may want to do.
I'd say that word would be obligation.
Not may, but is obligated, that's an expectation.
I think if, like we talked before, if, if there's going to be a new department or a change or the abolishment of a department, that should come before council. Y'all cool with that? I mean, is that the way you did it, Ron?
I did.
Of course, that's with the exception of personnel.
These are all, this is already essential.
Sure.
So I've put that, I've started our list of expectations.
Awesome.
This just says each, each department has its director. Two or more can be headed by the same person. City manager may head more as well. There were times in my own organizations where I might combine, the, the department director may be over two departments or one. And, and then I'll split them back up after a while and make sure that they coordinate again. So that may happen from time to time.
We have two sitting here. Kyle is not only IT, he is the assistant emergency management director. And she's the interim city manager and the emergency management director.
It works.
How often is a city manager also the head of a department, though? That seems complicated.
You might say that, that Charlene right now is the head of a department.
I guess that's true.
Yeah, she's the head of the city emergency management department. You might have, the city manager is the head of the economic development program too. That's an example. Or in a, in a, in a long absence, the city manager might act as the public works director until you find somebody. You may not have someone he feels comfortable, he or she feels comfortable appointing, whatever. But this, this sort of anticipates a more permanent view of that. And I, I've done, you don't see it very often. Probably be the exception as opposed to the rule. Prepared, city manager prepares and submits the budget. There's a timeframe outlined to do that. And also appoint the director of finance. And then other personnel. Personnel appointments are merit-based, non-discriminatory. There's, there's a clause on not being indebted, a code of conduct, not related to the council, the city manager or officers, officer oath of office, there's a requirement. I'm not, I don't remember quite what the not, no one did in this means. But I think it was just kind of a minor, minor discussion.
That is interesting.
And we'll make, I need to probably go back and take one, do you have a charter?
I do not, I'm good at it.
No, that's okay.
Maybe it's.
It seems like no special figures, right?
Maybe instead of like a credit check, it's do you owe the city?
It may be.
Yeah, it may be that part that you.
Utilities or taxes.
Right, right.
That's kind of the way that reads, but I'm curious about it.
She's gonna look it up. There's also some discussion about the police department. And I, and I've learned that the police department is both civil service and collective bargaining. And, and the fire department is just collective bargaining, I believe, is the, is the difference. So I'll put that into the job profile as well. And certainly, that could be an expectation that you would prefer someone who has had some experience in civil service. I would, I would think you'd want someone, if it's possible. You're not gonna get, all of them, all the applicants are not necessarily gonna be experiencing that because civil service is not, not prevalent throughout the entire state. And if they, if an applicant comes from outstate, they may not have had any direct contact with it. Certainly, somebody is, would that be a reasonable expectation from y'all's perspective? Or does it matter from your perspective?
Charlene, can you weigh in on that?
Sorry, we were looking for the.
Civil service, would you say an applicant for city manager needs to have that experience? Or is that something that's on the job training and coordination with PR?
I think they can learn it.
Okay.
I think they can become familiar with it.
I wouldn't make it a qualification, because that might not somebody that's.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think it's valuable, but it does also seem not necessary. What about agendas, Ron? Is there nothing in our charter about the city manager's obligation to create the agenda? Or?
Obligation to prepare the agenda?
To prepare the agenda?
No, I didn't see anything in the charter. And I don't usually see anything in charters.
About agendas.
No, usually where that comes is in an internal council rules and procedure. That's usually where you'd find those. Who can put items on the agenda? How many days in advance an agenda's published? How, how many days in advance you can put an item on the agenda? And typically, the city manager and the city clerk work closely in preparation of that. I've, I've been, I've been in, in, in two cities where the city clerk was actually my secretary. So it was such a small city. They, they had secretarial duties, and so we just put the agenda together and there was never any question. One city that was clearly an office, separate office like you have here. Then we just worked closely together to make sure the agenda items were properly added in. And, and it becomes very, very fluid. Typically, the city manager will work closely with the mayor as well in the preparation of that, of that agenda. And then, and then the manager makes sure that everything's put, put in place, to get it all done. And the department makes sure that it's written correctly and it's placed. That's usually what they do. But I very rarely see it in the charter.
Yeah, it's not in there. The way we were operating, when I was first elected, was either the city manager, the mayor, or a majority of council could place an item on the agenda. But that is morphed into being non-existent unless we want to set that policy. It may take me a little time, but I've never denied a council person putting something on the agenda. I mean, that's, they're an elected official. They come to me, it's gonna go on there. If, and, and I think every city manager that I've worked with has been the same one.
I wonder, I'm curious about these like internal policies and procedures you keep mentioning. It seems like, and at TML, I feel like I heard a lot about cities working together, councils working together to create internal rules and policies. And it seems like the kind of thing that even when it, like it's sort of a long-term vision idea where it's like, even though things might work well now and they gel, it's nice to put things in place for down the road. When if a totally new council's there or things flip around, and it's nice to have something to reference to and say like, this is how it should work, in case anyone's trying to fly off the handle or doing great.
And that's something you could look at for the future, since you don't have it. And that would help define those kinds of things. It's not, it's not to try to put the wheels on something, it's trying to keep the wheels going.
Right, yeah.
I think that's something in 2019, with the help of the new city manager, that we could workshop.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a, a, maybe a city manager with experience crafting that in the past or working on something similar, or at least working with a city that had one, you know, so we could.
Not a requirement, but would be nice.
Right.
We'll set that up for sometime in the spring and get us a policy going.
Yeah, just for future.
It's a referendum to close the police department down. Must, must have tried at some point in time.
It was.
And it became a charter provision.
They tried to cut back staff.
Yeah. A lot of times, these kinds of issues are in the charter because of a problem in the past. So you move from a city charter and the statutory, if you will, the charter provisions that, that call out what the responsibilities are into the city code. So there's a section in the, in the code on administrative departments that consists of a city manager and the clerk and any appoint, any assistants that might be there. That's just a name for the city manager department, it appears to me. But it, it repeats a lot of the duties that are outlined in, in the charter. And then the code also authorizes these departments. So I, I think all of those departments are probably still, not the charter, but the code authorizes these departments in Article II. And I'm assuming that all of them exist in one form or another. They're probably, they may be combined in some regard, they may need to be updated. But this would be what the new manager would take a look at, to kind of see what does the organization look like in addition to the organizational chart. And then this is really hard to read from this distance, but, and I can't use, I can't use the, the red dot. It just kind of goes away. So at the top, you've got the, in purple, city attorney, prosecuting attorney, municipal court judge, city manager, city clerk, budget commissioners, economic development. And that's one of the things that I, I talked a good bit about with your economic development director. At the staff is, you know, what does that look like? What are some of the key needs? That's probably, that will be a section in the job profile and what that relationship should be. And I want to talk about that with you all and your expectations. What should that relationship be between the economic development corporation and the city government itself? So you've got the EDC director, the public relations specialist over, under the economic development corporation. You've got an assistant to the city manager and emergency management coordinator, who was Charlene at the time. Then you've got IT, police, fire, public services, finance, HR, library, code confinement, code compliance, and development services. So you've got a, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten people responding directly to the city manager. So it's a very flat organization in those terms. One of the things, and I'll show this to you in a little while, one of the things that the staff has suggested is a rethinking of the organization to delegate duties a little more and not keep it quite so flat. But that, that'll take a little time for the manager to try to figure out, the new manager, what he or she wants to do. But that's what you have right now. And are there any, is, well, before I say that's what you have right now, that's what I was given. So is that what we have right now? Is that our existing organization?
Is that right? Because I can't see it from here. I can't even see it there, so.
That came out of this, this year's budget.
Okay, so everybody's good with that current organization?
Yes, sir, we've seen it in budget.
You have?
Yeah, we've seen it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I want to publish that so that any applicant can take a look at that and say, okay, here's what it looks like. And we'll also talk about the numbers of employees that you currently have and things of that nature. I don't have those numbers for the profile yet. I've got a graph, I've got a graph going, but I don't have those yet.
I think council might consider, instead of an assistant to the city manager, an assistant city manager.
Okay.
Who will be available and, and know Lamarck in and out when this new person comes in. And then they would each have the same assistant to the city manager and.
So that would be the creation of a new one.
I like that idea.
Do you think that's a, have you all talked about that? I mean, is that a, is that a good enough plan to be able to anticipate in the job profile? Or are we a little premature on that?
I'm for it, is anybody that isn't for it?
No, I'm completely for it.
Yeah, it could be very beneficial.
I think it would be extremely beneficial, and so. So we need another clerk position too? She's already in place, but there are some order of force, time limits on actually hiring a person. We can't be involved in personnel, but there's a very sharp person currently working as an aide in that back office.
Actually, she's, her official day is today. Her official start date is today.
She started today?
Her official date is today.
No, well, it would be aide.
Okay.
Assistant to both managers.
Okay, okay. That would be the official title, assistant to?
I'm not sure that'd be up to the manager.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna figure that out. Right now, she's an administrative assistant, or I'm sorry, executive assistant to administration and city clerk.
And that, that could stay that way. I mean, that covers the whole office, so.
So kind of with that directive, we're certainly not taking action tonight. Would you, would you want to direct the city manager to amend the organizational chart? To create that, to show that position on the org chart? And then y'all can come back and approve that at a regular meeting. But we can, we can show that position to be available. I think it'd be helpful if, if you're ready to move that quickly on that.
I'd like to table that discussion for right now.
Okay.
Thank you. But you can let the, the applicants know that council is leaning towards having an assistant city manager. That way, when something happens and somebody's out of town or they're ill, somebody's there to step in and you don't have to send us an email that says, today, I'm going to Colorado for, or Alaska to hunt for two weeks. And for the first week, the fire chief will be the city manager, second, you know.
Well, like you said, that's a lot of people to report to one person. It would be really smart to learn how to figure out which ones can report to the assistant city manager instead. I think that's smart.
You know, I struggled with that as a city manager, the larger the organization became.
Right, it's a lot.
The more you had to kind of figure out how to delegate and reorganize. And I never, I never did get to that ACM position. I wish I had it, I needed it a long time. They have it now, but I didn't get to it, but it was needed. Because I had the organization, it was almost this flat, it was pretty tight.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion about the org chart? So we'll have this one ready and then y'all can work through that process of the ACM.
Sure.
Qualifications, so this is in the code and it's also in your job description. And I've got, you should have a copy of the job description there in front of you. So I want to make sure we're all on the same page here. Because if you want to change this, then we'll need to change the job description as well and make that, make that work out. So it requires a bachelor's degree and with an advanced, what they call an advanced degree, preferred or a master. Not required, but preferred. At least five years of continuing, continually increasing responsibility, preferably, but not required, is a city manager or assistant city manager. So even, even with five years, it would be one, one tick more, one punch more on your ticket if you, if you have the CM or ACM experience.
Sure.
The experience disciplines of the city manager, the finance. The experience disciplines of a city manager, the finance, planning, engineer, those are my questions. Is there a specific experience discipline that you would prefer over another? How important is one of those over another?
In education and experience?
And in experience. So if you had, if you had a, well, this is not a good example. City manager's gonna stand on some. If you had an ACM or a finance director, or a finance director and a director of planning, that wanted to move up into the city manager position, which one of those two would be the most important for you?
Sure. I think in the assistant city manager, uh, education and experience, we would weigh the higher degree and, and base that on years and years of experience.
Okay. So if you have an ACM applying, let me make sure I understood that correctly. Get an ACM applicant, you would weigh experience over a degree. Is that what I heard?
That's my opinion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Everybody agree with that? So you've got an ACM who's had management, obviously management experience, but they may not have a master.
Well, if they've been in a city like Lamarck over twenty years.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, yes, I do. It's, it's hard, it's a hard thing to write, you know.
Right.
So individual, so subjective to what that person's story is, right? Like, I mean.
Yeah, it is.
So it's hard to put that on paper.
It is, and.
So I guess.
I think when you, when you speak with someone, you're gonna know, uh, how much experience as a city manager they've had. I mean, they could have, uh, a doctorate and not know what's going on.
Yeah, but it's.
That happens.
I mean, I suppose, I do want them to not be, um, completely naive in the area of finance, since the budget is such a huge area of the city manager leadership, but I don't know if I would say I weigh it over any other experience, you know, that.
And really what I was kind of aiming at is a non-AC, non-CM or ACM person. So if you have a department director and you say, you know, I really would like, it really would be nice if we had a city manager with engineering experience or a city manager with finance experience or city manager with planning experience. So that's sort of where I was headed.
I did talk to the mayor pro temp when he, I didn't talk to him. He texted me and said that he couldn't be here this evening and, and a couple of his points, uh, just in the last few weeks, uh, as he and I have talked about our roles on the committee, is someone that did have some engineering and planning experience, uh, because we're growing so rapidly, we're gonna have to do a lot of stuff and engineering is a big part of that. Not gonna knock anybody out if they don't, but that would certainly be.
But if they do, that would help rate them up.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna make my comments from experience, working from both a bean counter, and I don't need a demeaning, financial versus practical degrees or hardline degrees as far as an engineering degree or a planning background. I'd rate that higher than I would the financial, because there's been more times than not, financially was looking at this as a rigid and they really don't have the clue as far as practical application or what's going on. And more times than not, that happens.
It's a different kind of superintelligence.
It, it is. And what you said about some people, I worked for a person from MIT who could not tie their shoe. I mean, it was.
I think I'd like to see someone who had experience. No, I don't think I would love it. It would definitely take it higher for me if they had experience managing a long-term, large growth project. Something, like you're saying, we, I, I think Mayor Pro Tem was right on, like, we're gonna grow so much, gonna have lots of big projects. We already have a bunch of big building projects that have gone on. But some, like, very explicit experience managing a long-term project.
I totally agree. One instance would be our downtown revitalization in Renaissance District. That's why, to me, it's extremely important, important that the next city manager be very pro economic development, pro EDC as far as our downtown revitalization, our blight, Habitat for Humanity, all those kind of experiences are helpful for where we're at right now.
Okay. That's another, that's another to add to the list. Uh, so.
And when I say pro, I mean, as opposed to being, I can't stand EDC and I never want to see any of them again, I mean, you know.
It's not very well said, but I want to hit an added, management of growth. To that, that takes a little bit of a different viewpoint than just kind of hanging on. You know, it's managing and helping the community grow. Managing and helping community grow.
Does he have a copy of the A and M goals for Lamarck that the citizens did?
I do not know.
I don't have a copy of that.
Probably need, you probably need that, because that was citizen-driven. And some, some of the items have been marked off and taken care of and there's probably a couple left, but it'd be nice for you to look at it, I think. You're good? You speak, Willis.
No, I'm asking a question. I need the, I need fingers, but. So you're okay, any, 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 uh, we've kind of got an exception in the, in the, for the ACM coming up, but the ACM coming up, but at least a minimum bachelor's degree, hire, uh, if possible. And of course, what we, the way we could say that, we can offset that with experience if they.
Well, does it number four do that?
Any combination of education, training, experience which demonstrates ability. I think it does. But I want to make sure that we're, that we're careful in, uh, maybe we need to talk to our HR director and make sure that, that last bullet is in there under the job description, because the job description may automatically eliminate somebody that's not degree.
It's, it's on here. It's on here. Yes, it says, "Any combination of education, training, and experience which demonstrates ability to perform."
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, I, I referenced the job description on that heading, but I just want to make sure it's there.
Almost every municipality has that bullet point in there.
Right, that gives you your flexibility to kind of make it, make it go one way.
If that degree is in basket weaving, doesn't mean that it trumps somebody with the experience.
Correct, correct.
Unless it's really good basket.
Yeah, I mean, like, it's got to be multi-color.
The basic thing about the code is that it does require, uh, a, an annual evaluation. And that's by code as opposed to by practice. That's good, that's a good thing. And that, that allows you to help hold them accountable. Everybody will expect it. There won't be anything surprising about having an, an annual evaluation. And what I'm thinking, what I would suggest is that once you, once we start nailing down these expectations, that becomes the basis, at least a basis for the performance evaluation. Did, you go back and say, did they, did they do these things? Did they follow those expectations?
Explain number one.
It's an at-will position, even though you have a contract. So in, in Texas by law, you can't contract a position and give them an entitlement to that position. So at any time, that release can take place, with or without cause.
Do most city manager applicants want a contract?
Yes, they're gonna want an agreement of some kind. Uh, and the agreement that you have with Carol is sort of typical, that you have with Carol, sort of typical of what the contents are. That's, and it becomes an employment agreement. Here's the conditions under which. Some will add, what are, how will you depart? Under what conditions will you depart as well?
I think that's the first contract that a city manager has had in Lamarck. Did, did pasts, Kyle, did past city managers have contracts? Cause I remember, uh, when we did that one for Ms. Butler, it seemed like a new thing at the time. And that was during her tenure. That wasn't coming in.
I would have been surprised if the past didn't happen, but I don't know for certain.
Yeah. I don't think he did.
You don't? Okay, then maybe so.
Anyway, that's.
I, I think Mayor Most, any applicant in today's environment is gonna want some sort of written agreement.
Sure, and, but they will be at-will.
All, all will anticipate and acknowledge, any Texas manager at least.
Sure.
Will anticipate and acknowledge that he's an at-will, he or she's an at-will applicant. So, uh, we've talked about the selection and timeline. We've talked about the governance process. We've begun to wrap our arms a little bit around experience and qualifications, those kinds of things. So I want to talk about expectations. For me, they define, they, they create clarity. Uh, if the manager sees that, kind of the applicant sees that, the manager sees that, then he or she knows, here's, here's my, here's my corral that I've got operating and then you all, you all can, uh, work around it. And I think, uh, some of the, some of the questions that I'm gonna ask you are around what are your expectations of each other as council members? It will help an applicant to know what your expectations are among each other, as well as what your expectations are for them. It's sort of about, this is how we function. This is how we work through the process. So, um, so our duties, our duties make a requirement of what we do, but doesn't make a requirement for what our expectations are or how we treat each other. So in terms of, uh, these are expectations that we've been writing for the CM, but in terms of expectations for each other, what are your expectations as a group of each other?
Is the next slide getting ready to tell us?
Nope.
All right, that's just, that's just.
This is the question.
We're brainstorming.
You're brainstorming. This is a question. What do we expect of each other? What are your expectations?
Everybody be treated equally and with respect. And that goes for us with each other, as well as the city manager towards the council. No teacher's pets.
The transparency and, um, what's the word?
Reciprocal of that was stated earlier in the charter, is that as council members, we each like to talk to different departments, find out what's going on. And sometimes we hear input from employees that we feel is deserving of a second look during budget time, you know, that may not get there to us if we hadn't talked.
Yeah, I think that was established earlier on.
Yes.
In the inquiry part, and different attorneys, uh, translate that word in many different ways. But to me, I'll, I'll just speak for myself, if I see a car that's buried in a pothole, I'd like to be able to pick up the phone and call Chase and say, "This is an emergency. There's a car buried in a pothole." On anything that's in written form, I, for me, it's always best if I'm texting or emailing a department with a situation that I always include the city manager in that text or email. And I don't know, I just.
Does everybody agree with that? To any inquiry, any, any communication, you, you CC the, the manager so he or she will know?
Any, like, emails or anything like?
Yeah, if you, if you see something out there on the street that needs to be responded to, send an email to the director, public works director, and say, hey, the pothole, CC the manager.
I do agree with that. I do think it's, you know, so this is, this is such an interesting question of like, I agree, you know, there's certain things that, like you were saying, Robert, you know, we're out and about. I'm at the library doing a storytime. I hear some, some family tells me about something happening on their street. I drive by it, you know, I'm aware of something. We all have that. And what I want to know is, you know, should we be, should we consider taking those things directly to the manager every time before we make a call? Because does it make lines clearer down the road? Or is it fairly common and completely A-OK, according to the way other municipalities do it, to just call that person directly or, you know, call the appropriate department, whatever? Cause I feel like it seems very, um, logical on one hand, like, that's what you do. You see that, we're the elected person, we're speaking on their behalf. But I can also see how sometimes that's complicated and really it needed to go through the city manager. And if we're setting expectations for the manager, you know, I want them to know, I guess it should be decided, when is it okay and when is it not okay?
Yeah, so inquiries are, are okay, because they're, you know, so I, you know, what, what is your schedule on paving the concrete? That's an inquiry too. If you say.
Or have, have you seen the car stuck in the huge pothole on Ross?
And that, that's an, that's an inquiry. I mean, you can put them in, in terms of inquiry.
Bottom line is, we're not giving directives to employees.
So when you, when you, when you say, "I need you to send somebody out there to pull that car out of the ditch," then that becomes a directive.
Sure.
And so you gotta be, you gotta define internally what that is and, and work through that. So matters of inquiry, matters of information, uh, are, are, you know, inquiry's certainly okay. If the council agrees that matters of information should be okay, then I think the council-manager relationship will eventually, will iron that out. If the coun, what I, what my policy has always been is if, if a council, always was, if, if a council, if a council member stops in to see a department director about something, the department director tells me. And then I may end up calling the council member and saying, "Did you get what you need?" But let's.
That's a great way to look at it.
Yeah, but, but, and most managers, uh, that I've talked to kind of have that relationship because they know you guys are out and about. And a lot of, I just had, had this exact conversation with the council, uh, two weeks ago. All of the council members are retired, so they can all just kind of roll with the flow when they see stuff, you know. And so it's a little, maybe a little less rigid, uh, in some cases. So the rigidity, the level of rigidity comes between what the council and the manager feel comfortable with, in my opinion. And that needs to be a conversation. So I think if we, if we say the ability to inquire, not direct, and always CC the city manager will be, will be okay and that'll understand.
In a, in a land and time far away, that morphed into a terrible situation. Not gonna mention the city or the name, but it got to the point where personnel were told that if they talked to a member of council, they would be immediately terminated, and that's not right.
Yeah, that's, that would, for me personally, that would be awful. That'd be pretty tough to enforce, for me personally.
Yeah, well, it's like, and I think, I'm not quite sure what quality to define it as, but, you know, I think it takes a manager with the leadership ability to, you know, the, the confidence to allow city council members to speak to staff in a way that is completely reasonable and, you know, say something like, "Y'all, this pothole is insane. I saw a kid, you know, fall into it and never come out," you know.
Sure.
But at the same time, a, a city manager who also has the ability to keep members in check as well, when, if we do step over, if we are just like calling Public Works every day, or if I, you know, I like, they won't leave the library or whatever, and just being like, hey, you know, a, a delegation of, a sensitivity, I guess. I, I really can't think of the correct word.
Looking into the future, that's very important. Doesn't really apply to our council as we sit today. But if this person is here three, five, seven years, uh.
Right, and that's what I mean. Maybe that's the kind of thing, you know, I would like someone who, I think we, I would like to think would be able to tell in an interview, you know, the strength of character of that person, what might be their weaknesses and strengths, but also maybe that's the kind of thing we start to define when we later on develop. But also, maybe that's the kind of thing we start to define when we later on develop those internal rules and policies. You know, like, what, what's the kind of acceptable line of, what, when is a line of inquiry too much, or, you know, how does a?
And the city manager would be involved in that discussion.
Exactly, like, and how does the city manager make sure that they can communicate their needs, or say like, yo, cut it out?
What are their expectations for each other? Treat everyone equally, transparency, build deep inquiry.
Oh, we're still on each other?
Still on each other, yeah, I can't, I'm running out of time.
Uh, you can, you can go to, you can go to five twenty, that gives us plenty of time to eat a piece of pizza. But there are wings, just so you know, Mr. Lard, cause I watched you last time, but you talk about somebody that can tear up some wings now. That's a violation of the charter right there.
What's, like, it kinda goes along with transparency, but, you know, straightforwardness, you know, of.
I can put it in a term, no blind sighting. Let's talk it out, talk it through.
Yeah, the willing to have a difficult conversation, you know, even if we disagree.
Absolutely.
We come to each other and say like, I disagree, and we talk it out.
We've had situations years ago, uh, and it was in a really, uh, dark hour for Lamarc, where it was constant bickering and fighting, in fact, there was no meeting for four and a half months. If I was a developer trying to get my plat done, and had millions at the bank running and the interest ticking, we can't ever go there again. We need to resolve our differences, and when we come out here, we do the people's business. If your vote is yes, it's yes, if it's no, it's no. And that can even be talked through and compromised, uh, before the public. And I think trust, we need to know that we can trust each other.
Okay. Anything else on expectations of each other? Trust, treat each other equally with respect, be able to communicate, have the difficult conversations. It's not, that's not bad, not having the conversation.
Right, that's much worse. I, I'd say, um, this is something I think that is definitely present on this council, and I hope would always be so, but an enthusiasm for the job, you know, a, a willingness to, you know, we, we run for election for a reason, and then to know that your job isn't done after you're elected, that's only when it started. And coming to monthly meetings is not it.
Yes, I'm a full-time, non-charter violating mayor. I'm on the streets every day, and there's so much to see, and so much to do, and so many people that just wanna know who we are, and what we do.
Yeah, um, and I've, I've kinda been thinking about that, so somewhere in that profile, I wanna talk about the, uh, these are, these are, um, I think maybe that takes us to the expectations of the city manager, what are your expectations of the manager? And that, uh, and I was gonna talk about qualities first, but let's talk about, cause that's different from expectations. We wanna talk about these expectations first. So if we're talking about the expectations of the city manager.
They're not, some of them are not dissimilar than ours.
No, I mean, I would say they all, why?
It's almost like a C above.
Exactly.
With, with regard to, uh, trust, communication, treat everyone equally. But, but there are, there are also other things that may be your expectation. And you've mentioned it a couple of times, Mayor, so right then was kinda my segue into this discussion to, uh, I, I'm gonna write this, and then. Uh, work closely with the mayor on ED initiatives. It's, it's kinda where, where you've kinda focused that conversation. Are there more than just ED initiatives that you would expect to work closely with the manager?
Can you add a C to that, that ED just sounds so weird to me.
EDC? I was just gonna say economic development.
Jeez, man, I, I am so sorry.
Oh, yeah, oh me, oh me, yeah, okay, only, only old men understand.
Well, I'm not gonna plead to anything, but.
Yeah, okay.
It's kinda like a campaign slogan of winning the future. It didn't work out so well.
Uh, so with EDC initiatives, economic development, so are there other things that would be broader and included in that, from your perspective, that we could, we could all be in agreement on, and that the manager would know in, in advance what that expectation is?
I think that expectation only works because I'm on the board. I would say work closely with mayor and council, because I want this council to be pro EDC and involved.
Okay.
Uh, we may, may start making, uh, those meetings, uh, posted for a quorum in the future, in the coming years, so anybody that wants to come and say, hey, what's this restaurant, what's the facade look like?
Yeah.
Uh, how much, you know, in fact, we're, we're voting on that remake this evening.
You're gonna have to move the meeting up to nine o'clock then.
Um, I'm trying to get a lunch meeting, that eight o'clock knocks me, and I'm sorry, I mean, I used to get up. I get up, I just don't get out.
Yeah, I would love that, I would think it would be great to post a quorum, cause I would love to go to the morning.
Till about nine-ish or so, but anyway, that's, uh, once a month, and when I say pro EDC, we need somebody who wants Lamarc to grow in the right way, and, um, doesn't treat the EDC as outsiders, but we're all a team.
Okay, so that's an expectation.
Because just from having been on the board these years, EDC is very sensitive to the will of council, cause that's all city money. In different accounts, it shouldn't be co-mingle, but it's all taxpayer money.
Right, fine taxpayer, okay.
I really agree with that, and I think on that same page, I expect that a city manager will make the effort to be familiar and known to all, like, to as many s- city staff as possible, in all departments, and, and everyone within the EDC, you know, so that they're not a stranger to, you know, I don't know, I don't mean they have to have like lunch breaks with all the, all the folks from Public Works, but know the folks from Public Works, make, show their face there, and make, you know, make that effort to be known and to be made available.
And the right assistant city manager can be crucial in making that happen.
Absolutely, yeah.
We, we allocate funding for training, but I also want a city manager to be cognizant that training's necessary. A lot of organizations, that's one of the first things that gets cut, is your, is your training budgets, you know, I don't know.
And that includes training for the city manager.
Yeah, yeah, but there are, there are training for different staff positions, uh, and cross-training between those positions makes for a stronger, resilient city when something happens to somebody, you know? They can't get here during a storm, you know, or, or something physically happens to them.
Okay.
Or they retire, or they, or whatever, we need to move some people around, or they want to go for a different position, you know? Shouldn't have to wait to get that position in order to do the training, if that's what you really wanna do.
Yeah.
I think, you know, that's a minuscule amount.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point, so what is, what, now, now you're beginning to define what those expectations are, then you could come back and, and in a performance review, where's your training program?
Yeah.
How well are you doing that, how well are you working with the EDC? Those become real, the valuable performance indicators, what else?
I expect a city manager to demonstrate a commitment towards hiring and, and managing the city in a way that's, how do I say this, like, um, responsive to the diversity of our city, and like actively working to make sure that as our city grows, we are paying attention to, you know, to everybody, and whether that mean, I mean, and it's hard to define exactly what that means in all capacities. I mean, in hiring new people, and in dealing with each of the departments, and just.
In dealing with citizens as well.
Dealing with citizens.
I'd like to see a city manager not ascribe motives to citizens when they have a complaint. Even though that person may complain three times a week, you don't know what's going on with them, and they, from time to time, and maybe every time, have a valid complaint. And so every citizen should be treated equal. No matter if they're stepping on your last nerve, uh, they voted us in, they pay the salaries of staff, and they should be responded to. Everybody's, everybody's.
One other one?
Okay.
Answer your email, and answer your phone. And if you're on the phone, make sure we get a callback. Usually that's been pretty good, but sometimes you have to make that as a statement.
Quick response time.
Be responsive.
And also.
Put a positive example down of that, of our current acting city manager. So, those are.
So be just, so, I, I need to put that on expectations, be just like Charlene.
Just make myself a clone.
Good job, okay. Other expectations? Any, any, any others?
You give us, give us some examples.
Oh, no, this is what I, this is what I need, you're right.
But you were a city manager.
Yeah, you're on track.
You want, you wanna apply?
Now, this is, this is my job, Rodney.
Sure thing, everything I keep thinking is all the things we establish for ourselves.
Yeah, I think, I think the C above, I think the C above is very important. Because I think we went back, at least in my mind, I was going back and forth between us and the city manager without realizing we hadn't gotten to that section yet.
Yeah, yeah.
So all, all of those would apply.
So let's, let's move from expectations to qualities. So what I've put on the screen are just some areas of qualities that I would ask you to kinda ponder a little bit. Personal characteristics, leadership style, communication skills, community involvement, administrative skills, those kinds of things. I've got a list that I'm preparing, but it's really kind of a generic, one-size-fits-all, and you'll see it in every different, you know, uh, city manager profile. But what are some specific things to this community and to the, to the time that you have that are important here from a characteristic, a quality perspective?
I believe any great leader does not demand respect, they command respect. In other words, by example, by being proficient, by being professional, people tend to want to follow them. And any, any great, uh, general, uh, male or female, will tell you that the guy that stays in the back, or the girl in the Jeep while all the other people are running forward, does not, that's the person who demands respect just because of the office. You need to command it by the way you handle yourself. And definitely a people person, none of this looking down your nose on anybody for any reason.
Um, I want someone, um, filled with empathy, I want someone empathetic. But at the same, you know, and empathetic, you know, doesn't mean you have to be, I mean, anything but ability to show empathy, you know, empathetic, and also, um, strong, brave, willing to, you know, like, have hard, have difficult conversations, so, you know, I believe that that's, that's bravery, so. And a really strong sense of accountability, I mean, it's, there couldn't be a bigger job.
Empathetic, showing empathy, already comprehensions of others states. Yeah, that really is.
Mr. Cox, how would we be able to quantitate all of these things during, during the process of an interview?
Al?
Yes, I'd like, how, how would be, how would be able to like check all the boxes, and make sure that the candidate described to all these notions they were listing?
Part of it's what they say, part of it's based on what they've done in the past, part of it, we gotta, we'll have a series of questions, some of which might have some ethical dilemmas.
Yes, sir.
Then you kinda begin to say, okay, how, how would they respond to that? And, and that, this sort of helps me pick out from the list of questions that I might have, or make up new questions. That helps me do that, to help you kinda check that box.
Okay.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna know, if you say, are you empath- empathetic, then the answer's good for what?
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully, keep correct.
And then he goes over with a hammer and hits somebody over the head, you know?
Correct.
So you gotta be, yeah, I think it, and, and you won't know everything about that person in advance, but you do, by the time you do the, the series of questions, you do the personnel, the, the personal inventory, and you call people that you know, it's one thing to call their reference, but it's another thing, that if you know somebody, to call a person that you know about that person.
Yeah.
Then you begin, and sometimes I can do that, can't do it every time, I'll blow them off, but sometimes.
I just thought of something, and I guess this really also goes along with the expectations, I don't know if it would, a, a willingness to be wrong, or say, I don't know, when they don't know, I mean, just honesty about, I don't know how to say that, when you don't know, or when you realize you've been wrong, to admit you've been wrong, and, you know, take it on the chin and move on.
I blew that one, it won't happen again.
Yeah.
I have a couple of those.
I hope so, that's, that's living.
I expect a strong leader not to rule by intimidation. In meetings, or public meetings with staff, or directions, you don't single out one, one person, or department head, or anything like that.
Very.
Those things are handled offline, you know, when there's a problem. That doesn't mean that if, if you got a meeting and you're supposed to, as a department head, supposed to have your ducks in a row and make your presentation, it better be there, but, you know?
You don't single anyone out.
Yeah, intimidation factor, that, that.
Because of personality.
Long-term health of an organization.
Absolutely.
Anything else in, in terms of, of their qualities?
What's next?
What's next?
I'll tell you how excited I am about more qualities.
Uh, yeah, what I thought was about what was next, was what staff said about issues and challenges before the city, and their desires in terms of expectations as well, so that, so I talked to them about both. Here are the kinds of things they talked about with regard to issues and challenges. There's an aging infrastructure, and somebody can lead us through that, that reading. There's an aging infrastructure, we need somebody to lead us through that, that rebuild process. Water capacity availability is an issue that's out there. It's, it's more availability sometimes than it is the capacity to provide in, in time to grow. Waste water treatment capacity, and I understand there's an engineering program underway now. I can talk about that. Update of codes, zoning classifications, water wastewater structure, some of the things that they identified that they would like to see the new manager help focus both with staff and council on, those kinds of things from an operations perspective. From also an identification of the old historic Lamarck support, this is, this came from the staff, support economic development, I should put EDC, it initiatives for redevelopment and the vacant lot revitalization program. So, so the staff does likewise acknowledge the need for economic development and working to encourage shopping at home, to help the outlet mall trans, that should have been transition, not transmission, the need for another grocery store. And to help overcome the perception that Lamarck has to outsiders from their perspective, it has sort of a negative effect. You know, we've had a lot of history, a lot of history and publicity with the school, for example. How are we, we're gonna have to say in our profile that the school is, you know, we gotta accept the fact that Texas City's running the school, the schools are being managed well, and it's a good place to get your children educated, particularly since they have to live in Lamarck. They can't go run over to Turtle Creek or some other school district.
Well, we have four districts in Lamarck.
Oh, that's right, you do. And I need to, I need to make that, I need to make that point too.
We have Texas City. No, I'm talking districts.
Hitchcock, Santa Fe.
We have Texas City, Dickinson, Hitchcock, and Santa Fe. And lately, we've tried to be inclusive of all those districts in the things we do, parade-wise, et cetera. Colleen's done a great job of that. I don't think we have any students going to Dickinson, but part of our tax base goes to their school district. Whoever drew those lines must have been out of their mind because.
I may set a record for the number of school districts in one. So, and, and get the highest and best use of the I-45 frontage. Several of you talked about having the longest single I-45 frontage in Galveston County.
That's correct.
And the council, I mean, the staff talked about that as well. From expectations, they were so specific as to say, we need somebody with a good planning background. We need comprehensive plan.
Love that.
We need that background. We need somebody pro-economic development, assisting in determining the highest and best use of all available properties in town. Improve the structures and conditions for employee morale. That, that structure oftentimes would have, have, have your approval based on the charter and the codes, but still really take a close look at that organizational structure and how you want it. Improve the perception of the city workforce in the community. That may take, that, that may take a lot of building from the internally before you go external. Be a long-term thinker, be proactive rather than reactive. Be flexible and approachable, listen and open-minded. I think you all have mentioned that as well. And then reliable and delegate to and trust staff for their expertise. So this came from your staff.
That's great.
You've said that as well.
Well, you know what?
You've said that as well.
Well, I think we're all on the same page, which I, I really respect the staff for what they've placed here. I couldn't agree more. I mean, I think they did a great job.
So the, the really neat thing, when you ask the two separate groups, what they're, what they believe the needs of the community are internally and externally, you ask the two separate groups, ninety-nine percent of the time you'll get an almost identical response. There'll be a few outliers, you know, but very rarely do you get to sit down and talk about those things together. And that's why I encourage planning sessions and other kinds of things that would include the whole staff. That's, that's a personal preference. But because you get, everybody's on the same page, but nobody knows it.
Yeah.
So then this is good. So you want a leadership that, a leader that acknowledges both the staff and the council's expectations. It's a great lead, I thought.
So, Mr. Cox, one of my only fears is that I don't want a rock star city manager to come in with a record of winning and to be restricted by some of the things that, some of the policies that we put in place. If they're accustomed to winning, they already have a system in place that produces, I don't want them to alter that system too much because that's what kind of give them, make them who they are as a leader and as an effective city manager. So I know it's like a tough line to really, or a tough dance to conduct, but how can we implement all this without taking away from the candidate or the potential candidate's personality?
A strong, a strong leader who would have, I think that would come under the expectation of not be afraid to make recommendations to the council.
Correct, yes, sir.
And does that, does that kind of fit with what you're talking about?
Yes, sir. We wish, we want someone with a tradition of, of getting things done and we don't want to suffocate on our preconceived notions.
Sure, yeah. Someone who listens to us, but also tells us what they're thinking.
That's what I do.
Yeah, I agree with that. But that's why it says desired. Doesn't say you gonna do this.
Yeah, correct.
I like the be a long-term thinker, being proactive.
Yeah, the long-term thinker.
That's a good one.
Helps in that regard too, bringing those things forward. If you don't bring them forward, if, if the manager doesn't bring them forward, what gets done?
Exactly.
That doesn't get done, whatever that issue is. You may ultimately decide, no, but that's your decision, not, not the manager. So you want somebody who's brave, you said that, willing to bring those recommendations forward for you all to consider and deliberate along with you.
Yeah, we want someone who's empowered, but not entitled.
Oh, boy, I gotta remember that one.
I'll give you that one for free, Ron.
Okay.
Really good.
Okay.
This is fun. It's exciting thinking about this kind of stuff.
So here, I forgot I had another slide on it. Understands HR and staff needs, performs a structural review of the organization. That was a little bit repetitive from the other, but this was more specific. Structural review, establish, establish a business plan that improves workflow and, and responsibility, delegation of responsibility. Don't avoid the problems, but address them. This is coming from your staff. And you've said that earlier, be willing to, to reach in there and make, have a hard conversation. Create positive relationships with all council members, open communicator, assist with the diversity of recruitment, particularly in PD. The chief said that he's got particular issues in that would find a diverse employment base. Establish performance plans and update compensation packages for all. So those were the, you know, those, those lists of bullets were really impressive.
Yeah.
And they, they feel some of the same need for change or difference or leadership that you all have recognized yourselves. So we've, we've talked about the duties, we've talked about the qualities, we've talked about the expectations. And now it's, it's my job to round all of this up and put it in that form of, to be drafted. So I wanted to talk just a little bit about compensation, salary and benefits. This gets a little busy. Salary-wise, what I put is your current. So currently it was, or the last city manager was 114, and I've, I've indicated to some of you that I think that's a little light for the next city manager, particularly.
What's it gonna take us to get a rock star, Ron?
Yeah, it's gonna take upwards to the 150 to 175 range. Yeah, yeah, but I think it is based on what others are making in this category or this size city.
I agree, we've been low for years. Lamarck's always been low.
Okay.
Yeah, and in your environment. You're in Galveston County, it's a, it's a highly urbanized, it's becoming an urbanized area, and you're right to think of it. Car allowance, I think, I'm, I'm thinking that a $12,000 car allowance is probably a bit strong. If you move that back to the, put that at half for the 600, 600, 500 a month instead of 1,000 a month, then you can take that, that 6,000 and put it up on the salary. Yeah. But car allowance, car allowance is treated like salary by the IRS now. And so you gotta take out, you gotta take out TMRS and social security, all of that out of that anyway.
Right.
And so.
I, I would make one point just quickly that there, I believe the EDC chairman is receiving 1,000 car allowance, and we wouldn't want to drop our manager below that.
Good point.
We'll keep them on them.
Okay. So we, we may want to leave that like it is, and that's probably, that's a good point. I'm just thinking that that was, that was one of those areas where you can kind of use it flexibly.
For years and years, no one, there were some city managers that wanted to be paid poorly. They didn't want to raise up.
Right.
And it's kept Lamarck like this, so you can't have a city manager making 65,000 and expect to hire a great police chief at 95.
Yeah.
It, it kept, it kept it all down. And so we finally just began to eke up now. Even 114 just happened last year, or this year, really.
Yeah.
It started out at 87 or.
We just have to make it known that car allowance is actually gonna, is.
Part of salary.
Total compensation package.
Yeah, and cellphone allowance is similar. Now, some managers will prefer to have a cellphone provided, and they'll keep their own personal cellphone separate from that. So it's however you guys are comfortable and whatever you work out with the, with the manager.
I just want one that's answered 24 hours.
There you go, doesn't matter, doesn't matter how you, how you get it. A lot of, a lot of the managers don't want their personal phone, such as their records app, so they, so they just say, give me a, give me a city phone, that's the one that everybody.
You go with that.
Benefits, TMRS is not 6%, 7% to one.
Yes, sir.
I, I hit the wrong button, I realize that now. You've got an advantage in that you do pay social security to your employees. Couple, a couple cities I've worked with lately have opted out, and that's a disadvantage in the market, because it used to come in from somewhere else that had, that has it. But having TMRS at 7% to one is good. There was a question I wanted to ask about vacation, and this is probably negotiable. In Carol's, she was allowed to, to, to start as if she had four weeks vacation, and that's not unusual to go ahead and say, no, you can't, you don't start out with two like everybody else. But the question is, was it or is it accrued immediately? Is it effective four weeks immediately, or do they accrue at that level of four weeks?
What's your opinion?
I think it's negotiable, and I've seen it be a part of the package. We'll give you four weeks now, credit.
Does that help in your recruiting?
I think it helps.
Well, then let's do that.
Okay.
Does there, is there, does there have to be?
But I don't think we want to put that in the job announcement or job profile. I think you want to hold that in your hip pocket.
Sure.
Does there have to be mention of like, maybe this isn't any gritty, but like when it can be used? I mean, do you say like, yes, you, you join us with four weeks, but you can't start using vacation until six months?
Been here six months.
Yeah.
That's part of the negotiation process. So for, and your standard employee in your, in your policy is probably six months before you can use it. You don't, you don't start out with any accrued.
Right.
So if you start out with it accrued at four weeks, then the answer is you ought to be able to use it immediately. But my goodness, you don't want them to go on four weeks accrued, you know, go to Alaska hunting.
One last deal before I really go to work.
Let me take my vacation first. Most of them wouldn't do that. I think the rest of those are, most of the rest of those are common employee benefits, but do you, have you paid for the spouse's or the dependents' coverage and health or not? And I don't have a strong opinion about this, I just want to.
Right now, we're not.
We're not.
It's just.
For any employee.
Expensive.
Do you pay for, and I'm talking about just for the city manager, do you pay for the employee's full health benefit? Okay, that's what's in the contract now.
That's for all employees, but that's also in.
Yeah, that's also.
I mean, you know, once you go off that slippery slope, then you've got other department heads that are just as deserving, you know.
And that's what I wanted to hear, just that philosophy.
We actually also, this council serves as the board for the insurance.
Okay.
Meet once a year to do that. And I don't, I don't think there's any city that is still paying spouse insurance. There, there may be, but.
Most, I think most cities have fallen to the cost of insurance and have had to.
Yeah, and that, we made that decision when we were in a huge deficit back in, what chief terms, the, the darker days of Lamarck's history. And one of the hard things we had to do was deal with spouse insurance, and that was gut-wrenching, but.
Yeah.
Unfunded mandates can bankrupt a city.
I'm curious about maternity and paternity leave. We don't have any of that for a city manager?
You don't have that as a separate. I think you have FMLA.
Thank you.
FMLA, and we also have, they accrue sick hours, eight hours a month.
Sick time.
I don't think we do any special for that. Most don't.
Most cities don't?
No, I don't think you, I mean, I think that went away a long time ago.
Most, most businesses don't either.
It's not a special, but it's not, nor is it not.
Sick time, FMLA.
So you, it's a.
FMLA covers, covers that.
The maternity part of it.
12, 12 weeks, not paid necessarily, but 12 weeks guaranteed.
That'd be a good time to take that four-week vacation.
But the question is, does the policy pay for the, for having it? But I think the insurance.
Does the insurance policy pay?
Yes.
Yes.
That provides maternity coverage, it doesn't provide maternity or paternity leave. Specifically, you have 12 weeks FMLA, and you can use your accrued vacation and sick time as a part of that.
Right.
To continue your paycheck, but there's not a.
But for, for, for a, for a man or a woman, there's FMLA 12 weeks?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
ICMA, the other two that I wanted to talk about were ICMA and moving. Right now, you are part of the contract, you participated. ICMA has a deferred compensation program. It's a 457 program, kind of like a 401 for private industry. You, right now, you contributed, in addition to paying the salary, you contributed 5% of Carol's salary for deferred, deferred comp. Are you all still agreeable to do that? I think that would be a big deal for, for most of the higher level.
For recruiting?
I didn't understand, I'm sorry, can we explain again?
In, in addition to the TMRS retirement benefits, 7% to one, you also put 5% of their salary into a deferred compensation program.
Oh, okay.
And that builds up just like a 401K does in private industry.
So it would.
Pretty nice benefit.
It would accumulate interest?
Yeah, it grows, yeah, and that, that is their money. TMRS, you don't get all of that money until you're vested.
So does the money come out there based salary?
It's in addition to.
Oh, addition, okay.
Over the buck. So if your salary's $100,000 and they get $5,000 into their deferred comp.
That's a nice benefit.
Annually?
Anually, yeah. I think, I think in the contract, it's paid on a monthly basis, but it adds up to the annual contribution.
That's a great recruitment tool.
It's huge, quite frankly, and I, I don't see it much in, at this level of, of the size city, so you're okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then moving allowance, moving expense. I noticed.
What'd we do before?
You did four, 4,000. I would say up to eight, but I wouldn't put that on the table yet. Eight's been pretty commonly accepted. The last few moves that folks came, one came from Amarillo, the other came from Indiana and did it within that $8,000 level.
So what else do we have in our pocket?
Just, I, I take, I put the moving expense in your pocket, I put the car allowance, the level of the car allowance in your pocket, but the cellphone, it doesn't matter whichever way they want to go and do whatever they, they prefer.
You have until.
The vacation.
And the vacation, put that in your pocket.
You have until 5:30 in case you're worried.
Well, I'm, I'm only two minutes over the amended table.
Where, oh, you are?
Yeah.
Cool.
So that was it. That was it. So, future decision points, we need to take a close look at that job description, make sure it aligns. I think it still aligns with everything. Job profile, I'll, I'll get that developed and get that to you and have that to you before your council meeting on the tent, so you'll have time to take a look at that and make sure it meets everything that we've talked about.
Council, if, if, and I want your input as well, if, if Mayor Proton and myself narrow this down to three to five people, would you object if it's in the state of Texas, us going and observing this person on their current job? Like demeanor at the meeting.
Is that a thing that the folks do? I think that sounds great.
They've, they've gone and interviewed them on their, in their location at their site.
Oh, I think that's great.
Because that way you.
Yeah.
You're around the people that have been working for them, number one, and you're, they're in their environment. And you can usually tell if a person is respected and well-liked and treats people with dignity.
Yeah.
In a day.
Mr. Cox, are you gonna interview any of the past employees of these applicants? Like other councils, you know, going to visit them is one thing, but sometimes.
It's like a phone interview?
I haven't usually, but I can interview a past employee, someone who's worked for that individual.
Yeah.
We have to, so I'd have to go to that city manager, to that applicant, and say, I need a list of people that I can call. They're almost references. So is that gonna help me? Yeah. That's why, that's why I hesitate just to call references, because you're only gonna get good news. And if I ask them to give me the name of some past employees I can talk to, they're gonna give me good news.
That's right.
Could you do some?
I don't think it's a bad idea, but I don't know how to get through that.
Could you just?
If you can figure that out, I mean, help me.
You're gonna have to go there.
I mean, could you just do something where it's like?
You're just gonna have to go there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, couldn't you just, I mean, the internet is a beautiful tool, you know, you find out wherever they were and whoever was their most immediate subordinate or fellow coworker and call that person.
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
That could be really valuable.
And we do a background check, and it's more than just references. So we've got, we've got everything we can do legally plugged in, and so does the city. We can use the city's or we can use our own. We've got, we've got our own process as well. But, and we get their permission. We gotta get their permission to do all that.
Has anyone just from the buzz spoken to you, a, a great candidate, just from the buzz? Has anybody spoken to you or?
Not yet. But we haven't, we haven't really put it out there yet.
Yeah.
But I have not.
We'll get them. Yeah.
So, we're, we're done. And I apologize. I spent too much time and I thought I probably was.
You did a great job. We appreciate you being here so much, and at this time, we're going to adjourn until our regular six o'clock council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.